WDEV News presents. The regular monthly meeting of the Fentress County Commission. The Fentress County Commission meets the third Monday of each month and you can see it live on Channel 12 Cable TV. It's a presentation of the Union Bank of Jamestown and Clark Range, your reliable banking partner since 1904.
For more than a century, Union Bank has been serving the people of Fentress County. Now, as we begin a new chapter in our history of service, we want to take this opportunity to reassure you that while our building may be new, we're still the same friendly people you have known for years. Union Bank, the same people, the same goals, and the same commitment to you. Union Bank, your locally owned hometown bank for more than a century, growing to meet your needs. Equal Housing Leader Member FDIC.
We'll call this Commission meeting to order. Would you all please rise for the place of allegiance by Commissioner Benny Hughes? An opening prayer, remain standing, Mr. Lester Gooding.
Has joined.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You will bow your heads for prayer. Our Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Father, we thank you for this day. Thank you for your mercy and your saving grace. But most of all, Father, thank you for your only begotten son, Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Father, we ask that we, you give us the directions that we need tonight to do the duties that we have to do. And we ask it all in Jesus' precious holy name. Amen.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mickey?
Here.
Justin?
Here.
Rod?
Here.
Kim?
Here.
Benny?
Here.
Robert? Lester?
Here.
Leon?
Here.
Larry?
Here.
Julie?
Here.
Nine four one absent. Our next item, we're going to take just a moment here and in recognition of the completion of our courthouse here. This is for the open house 2021. Since 2014, the historic courthouse has had several renovations. The first major project was the demolition of the old jail and constructing the wall on the west side of the courthouse. The second major project was replacing the roof of the courthouse and also some windows in the past that were also put in place. And now, thanks to the governor's support grant, we've been able to make the following renovations to the historic courthouse. Replacing the old boiler system to a new system that is more reliable and energy efficient. The old boiler was put in in around 1968, 69, 70. And the last two years that we have used the gas, it has actually caught on fire, the floor has, so we thought it was time for another change. And as there was one of the renovations that we did, they put 37 units in the courthouse here. Making ADA upgrades to the main entrance and also adding the ADA restroom for handicapped access. This is the difference in the commission seats at this time. It was, had risers in it, and then up here it had a couple risers here. So now, if anyone is elected that is ADA or a handicapped citizen and gets elected, it is more mobile for them. Any seat up here is accessible for anyone that is handicapped if they get elected, has to have use of the courtroom facilities. In which the old benches were in here, they also were removed. It got to where they were, some were unrepairable, some when you sat down and tried to get up, you couldn't get up because you were pinched to the seat. Some had been put back together with different types of structures, so we did remove those and put in the seating. We have now 100 seats here. And the upgrades, you can tell that you've seen that have been done in here in the main courtroom. Like we said, ADA accessible commission chambers, removable seating in the main gallery, compliant door hardware on all the doors in the courthouse, audio video upgrade, which is the only system that we put in that is actually 100% guaranteed to go to court, to stand behind is the audio system that we have now in the courthouse. And then, secondly, restoring the stone wall in the commission chambers which is behind us that was put here in 1905. The brick columns downstairs, they were put up after the Civil War. It's just some historical items that were done here in the courthouse. A new flooring and sheet rock in the main public areas of the courthouse. Renovated several offices, including the veteran service office, human resources, accounting office, finance office, register of deeds, which I hope y'all saw in Mr. Ish's office, down at the register of deeds. The fireplace that has been slightly restored and taken uncovered, which was here, put here right after the second fire in 1904. Again, we'd like to thank the governor. And most of all, we'd like to take this time, we have three gentlemen with us tonight that were a big, showed a big responsibility in getting the grant down to where we could use it, where it would be more beneficial to us. That is, if we would please stand Senator Ken Jaeger, Representative John Mark Wendell, Representative Kelly Keisling. These three gentlemen, not only now, helped us, helped us with this restoration project to be able to do what we've done, but they also, everyday practice, you can get ahold of them anytime you want to get ahold of them. And if they're busy, they will call you back. And just, we appreciate so much what y'all do for us each and every day, we really do here in Fentress County. Thank you very much. We'd also like to thank GNS Improvement, LSC, and all their teams that's here, their office manager, Mr. Debbie Garrett. Other remodeling crew was Mike Matthews, Eddie Stran, Dean Hossen, Rick Usher, and Kane Flowers. We'd like to very much, Nate, we appreciate all that you've done. You went out and more than just what you got bid for, you've done a lot of stuff that behind the scenes that you actually furnished yourself and it's very much appreciated for that. Our staircase, it was, it is the original staircase that was put here in 1905. It had a lot of work that had to be done to it as far as the painting taken off of it. Mr. Jerry Fincham did that. Our cabinets were constructed by Mr. Mike Wright. All of our locks and keys, Mr. Willie Strong, Mr. Nathan Slaven took care of all our plumbing and electric. Our flooring was installed by Mr. Bobby Arms. Our sheet rock was done by Vince Lawhorn. And our stone and brick work was done by Mr. Billy Upcock. Upland Design. They designed and oversight of the renovation and the ADA projects. As we said before, BIS Digital. They installed the audio equipment. WDEV and Mr. Kevin Baz for helping and answering the questions regarding the audio and the video equipment and how to ensure that the community can best get access to publicly radio broadcast. The Chamber of Commerce for applying for the TVA Technology Grant for the ECD Room, which supplied the laptop projector and projector screen. Gill's Wallpaper, which furnished the, was under contract, who furnished all the interior designs and supplies. Stone Mechanical, which installed HVAC system. RNT Trophies did all the ADA door and directional signage. Wood sign shop for the canvas photos that you saw in the ECD Room. If you're not, I hope it takes just a minute before you leave tonight to see those on the left as you go in. Red Cross replacing their Wall of Fame display honoring those who have donated a gallon to 15 gallons of blood. Green Tree Landscaping for keeping the outside of the courthouse. And I'm sure that y'all noticed, they keep it up for us. And we'd like to say a special thank you to all the courthouse employees who kept their patience with all, especially with HVAC and all the hammering and the noise that went on. All of our, the office holders, our elected officials here. And we'd also like to thank Sheriff Michael Reagan, he's with us here tonight. He furnished the trustees. When we needed something that they're done, or we need something packed off or hauled off or carried across the street, they were, he always made them available, that they would be here to help us in the chairs. They put all the chairs together and just this stuff that they do, the mowing of the yard outside of all of our county places that he has to mow. The trustees through the sheriff's department, it's allowed by the sheriff that they do all that. And they just do a lot of stuff that's really needed. And of course, and one more person I'd like to say, I'd like to thank Ms. Amanda. She kindly, when we had an idea, she kindly spearheaded it and took it, took the calls and answered the calls. And just was, just a tremendous help in putting all this together. And the employees up here in the finance office also, they, you know, we all just, it's just a team effort all across the commission. Surely don't want to forget though, because they allowed us to do all the stuff that we've done here of passing what we need to be done to get the courthouse and the ADA and everything taken care of. And the commission, it's a, it's a no thank you job. But they're greatly appreciated and I'll stand behind them. And it's just something that someone has to sit in that chair and do the work that they do. And you don't see a whole lot of people run or fret office, but we certainly appreciate the work that our commission does for us. And on the ADA projects, county buildings and properties, like to acknowledge those who worked all on this project. The biggest part of a lot of the ADA project was over at the Kirby Johnson Ball Field, when they did that over there, they was going to have to put in the ADA handicap restrooms and such, and got to looking at it. And the concession stand had been there since the early 70s. Was actually crumbling away, bricks, you go up, you could hit a brick or a block, I'm sorry, and it would actually just crumble. So the commission allowed that there to happen also. And if you'll take time to go over by there sometime and see, you'll see that is a great improvement. And that's another place over there that Mr. Nate and his, some of his outside crew, they actually went down there and roofed the lower fields at no charge to the county, just as a donation. Mr. Rick Cravens, he worked through Nate and they did some of the excavation work over there. Also our county, Highway Department did a lot of work over there also, as far as grading, grade work and such. And then Mr. Randy Roy's, and he did a lot of work also over there at this time with labor and just doing a lot of things. There's a lot of stuff that's happened that's went down. And basically, it's all been a team effort. And our, our photos downstairs, of course, there's one down there that the project this was taken in, it was running the paper and the frames were sponsored by different businesses and individuals. New York Chris Mill picture, it was by Nelson Matthews and it was sponsored by Main Street Shell, In-N-Out Market. Then Hans Forest was, Wolfrey Riquet photo was by Chuck Sutherland and it was sponsored by Mountain Barn Builders. The World War I trench reenactment in the front of the courthouse as you come in, that there was reenactment of Sergeant York. And that's a State Park photo, and that's by Bill Smith, Outlet Real Estate Association, they sponsored that one. Welcome to Jamestown photo by Brooke Schulte, and it's sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce. Twin Arches, that is at the bottom of the steps down here, it was taken by Sarah Dunlap, sponsored by Grassroots Consulting, Ms. Amanda Maynard. She's here with us tonight. North at Falls, that was by Wendell Shalaback. And that was sponsored by McDonald's of Jamestown. In Incoming Rain, the Honey Creek Overlook was Big South Fork, that was by Jim Jero, Jay Row. And that was sponsored by the Helen Water Deal Court Reporting. Hiking in a winter Wonderland State Park, that was by Ms. Angela Drone. That was taken and sponsored by Hall Family Pharmacy. Fentress Cross Palma, Tennessee, that was by Lauren Dickens. And that was sponsored by Metathriff Pharmacy. And the Fall Magic at Polk Holla, that there was sponsored by, that was taken by Mr. Nelson Matthews. And that was sponsored by myself and my wife Debbie. And End of the Line Winter at Oval Train Depot, picture down here, that was by Erin Nickens. Sponsored by the Fentress Courier. Cameron Mount General Store photo, that was also taken by Mr. Shalaback. I hope that's how you pronounce that. That was sponsored by the Wyatt Insurance Group. And also the barn at Sunset in Jamestown was taken by Nicole Newport and sponsored by Bucka Home Equipment. That's just some, I hope I not missed anyone, but that's a lot of people behind it that's helped take care of this tonight, that we had all the renovations and certainly appreciate, but like to say once again, I'd like to thank once, one more time the Senator Jaeger, Representative John Mark Wendell, and Representative Kelly Keisling for all the help they do for Fentress County that helped get us this money. And to do this with, and this, some of this thing, two thirds of this was going to have to be taken out of our fund balance to do the things we had to do as far as the ADA and then the heating system and all. But we've not had to touch a penny of our fund balance. We've used it for many different things, allocations for many different departments out through the county other than just renovations work. And we have a record of everything that we've spent and it's went to this more than the renovations and such. But I certainly appreciate the commission being behind it and also the citizens of Fentress County. I think it's something that this building will stand here for a test of time, I hope. And I'm sure that I'll never see it renovated again, but I hope someone's grandchildren or children does. And I appreciate y'all very much. That's all I have to say on that. Our next item of business. Consideration of the notaries. That would be Billy Joe Knatzer.
Mr. Chairman, you approve the minutes.
Okay, we'll step back here. We'll approve the minutes. I hope y'all have had time to read the minutes and checked over them or hear a motion to accept them. Motion to accept them by Commissioner Leon Step, second by
Second.
Commissioner Justin Miller. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary likewise. Motion passes. Now, consideration of approval of notaries. Billy Joe Knatzer, Brittany McLeod, Tara J. Wright. Do I hear a motion to accept these? Motion by Commissioner Justin Miller, second by Commissioner Mickey McDonald. Sorry, the motion was made by Commissioner Rod Williams, I'm sorry. Roll call vote, please.
Mickey? Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Ort.
Rod?
Ort.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Julie?
Four.
Nine four one absent.
Nine four one absent. Motion passes. Number eight. Consideration of approval of an amendment to the Fentress County Employee Handbook to Observe Federal Holiday, June 10th. This holiday will be observed on June 19th of each year. Last week, the US Senate and also the Congress, US Congress passed the resolution to make June 19th another federal holiday, and it was signed by the President of the United States last week. And so, that there will be going into handbook. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary likewise. Motion passes.
We didn't get a motion. Four seconds. I'll make the motion that we approve.
Motion by Commissioner Larry Cooper to approve it.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Justin Miller. Now, let's all play, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Our next item, number nine. Acknowledgement of the Fentress County Employee Handbook as of 6/21/21, which includes all updates that have been approved by the Fentress County Commission since October 2018 through June 21. That was the new handbook that has come out. Do I hear a motion to that effect?
I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Lester Gooding. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Mickey McDonald. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary likewise. Motion passes. Item number 10. Consideration of Approval of Resolution 2021-21, Classifying a Human Resource Office Within the Budget and Office of the Fentress County Finance Department.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve.
Motion by Commissioner Larry Cooper to approve this. Do I hear a second? Second by Commissioner Leon Step. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, is that going to put more work on Tyler?
I was going to ask the same question.
I mean, that'll be an extra personnel who's carrying duties outside of what it, what some of her duties were in the finance office, not all of them upon taking on. Yeah, I mean, it'll be more responsibility, but it's, I mean, I'm okay with it.
Well, she'll be doing the same work she is now.
Yeah.
But it'll just be another employee under his umbrella, it's what it'll be. Things that are done in that office is a lot of insurance benefits, a lot of wages for new employees, exiting employees, personnel files. She deals with finance a lot, I believe already.
Yeah, we work hand in hand quite a bit as it is.
And then she also helps take care of the Affordable Care Act also, I believe, too.
One thing we'd like to mention too, by doing this, you know, it's $7,000 or $8,000 savings that we've been able to pin. Well, I mean, it's not a big savings, but it's some savings. And I'm all about saving money. If you're not about saving money, then we shouldn't be sitting in these chairs.
If we're worried about, you know, the confidential information thing, I think we talked about that in a budget meeting. I mean, and her having a boss and the confidential information. I mean, I was an RN since 1994 and I handle confidential information, insurance numbers, social security numbers more than will ever come through HR for Fentress County. And I had a boss that whole time, you know what I mean? So I don't think having a boss should be an issue if that's something that's in somebody's mind.
Well, another question I could have too is let's just say something goes haywire and something ain't done the way it should be, could this come back to fall back on Tyler as well, since he's now going to be over the department? Like if you have something, you know, if you have something bad come back that's, you know, out of her office and then, you know, you know what I'm saying? Well, it would, because he's, he's her supervisor, or would, potentially would be. That's what I'm saying, he's got more responsibility coming on. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, could, could we, is there possible to have another meeting to maybe go over pay for compensation for him getting another employee added under his wing?
That meeting can be had anytime. Once you pass the budget, you can go back and amend the budget.
Any, any more discussion?
Well, I just want to say that I feel that HR and finance are two separate entities. I think they should be kept separate.
Any more discussion from anyone? Roll call vote.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Ort.
Rod?
Against.
Kim?
Against.
Benny?
Against.
Lester?
Against.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Julie?
Four.
Five, four, and four against and one absent.
Motion passes, five, four, four against, and one absent. Item number 11. Consideration of Approval of Resolution 2021-22, Fixing the Tax Levy in Fentress County for the Physical Year Beginning July 1, 2021. This here is set at General 146. Solidway Sanitation, 11 cents. General Purpose School, 22 cents. General Debt Service, 12 cents. For a total of $1.91. Is that correct, Tyler?
Sir.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Benny Hughes to approve, second by Commissioner Lester Gooding. Any more discussion?
This is the current rate.
Yes, it is. If not, roll call vote.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Ort.
Rod?
Ort.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Julie?
Four.
Nine four one absent.
Nine four one absent. Motion passes. Your next item. The Consideration of Approval of the Following Budgets for Fentress County. Let me untie these things.
You'll need to amend that budget before passing it to include the Human Resource Director in the finance office. You'll need to amend that budget before passing it to include the human resources in, in the finance office. It's not multiple options. I mean, you'll just pull the salary line items of hers out, we'll go into finance, operating lines.
So you need that done before this is passed in its entirety then?
Yeah.
I make a motion that we amend the 101 budget to allow the human resource to be put in the finance office.
Second.
The motion's been made by Commissioner Larry Cooper to amend the 101 budget to include the Human Resource Office operation. Second by Commissioner Mickey McDonald. Roll call vote, please.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Ort.
Rod?
Ort.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Julie?
Four.
Nine four one absent.
Nine four one absent. Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we pass amended 101 general fund budget.
Motion been made by Commissioner Larry Cooper to pass the 101 budget, county general fund. Second by Commissioner Lester Gooding. Roll call, please.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Against.
Rod?
I'm sorry, I was, what was we voting on here?
We're voting on now the
Amendment to the
No, no, we already voted on that. We're voting on the 101 budget. General Fund budget, 101. That includes all your operations in your general
Against.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Julie?
Four.
Seven, four, two against, one absent.
Seven, four, two against. Seven, four, two against, one absent. Motion passes. Your next one is your solid waste.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Kim Davison to approve solid waste sanitation fund one sixteen. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lester Gooding. Any discussion?
Yeah, we had voted in, back, was it September, October, about the, uh, construction waste? Is that, have we seen anything out of that, or?
I mean, as far as seeing what?
Revenue? Have we been, any income out of it? I didn't see anything. They're not charging for it? Why are they not charging?
Over the last time, Ken, I had of it there.
Well, I didn't see anything in here, said we were getting any money out of it, so.
They're doing monthly billing.
No. They're not billing for, for that yet. When I talked to them the other day, their scales are not working properly, they're waiting on somebody to come in and work on their scales, supposed to come in in July. Whenever I requested to see what that was, a differentiation, a differential of what that's bringing in versus the tipping fees, that's, they've not been collecting that.
Was it, uh, was, was it by pound is what we were charging, or by load?
By ton.
By ton, by the ton?
Tonnage.
Fifty dollars a ton. If the scales are not working right, then how are we paying Scott Solid Waste to haul off our solid waste? Because they weigh it.
Unless they go in and out over.
The scales are weighing, and the scales are certified. It's something about the printer and the computer that's off to the side, they're having to run handwritten tickets. They wasn't gonna charge because they're having to handwrite a ticket that could be changed. That's, when I contacted Solid Waste the past week, that's what, the answer I was given of why they're not collecting.
Could they not use handwritten ones until they get that done? I mean...
Worked for decades.
That's a question for Solid Waste.
I can do it, last time I had, they were writing handwritten tickets, I knew nothing of this.
When I asked the other day how much that was bringing in.
Last I heard, last, last only, when I had contacted them, they were doing handwritten tickets.
Well, that was what I was asking, I just didn't see anything in here, it said we were collecting anything off that, and I knew we'd passed it.
Can we have an update for that by the next county commission meeting? Can we get that date?
We can, yes, we can do the status and find out where it's at. But we're passing the budget tonight, we're not passing one.
Is, is there any question about the weights not being accurate?
It's, the question is, the question is, the handwritten tickets?
I know that, but, uh...
Which can be changed.
As supposed to be printed, as supposed to be.
As a printer, yes. What does your auditor say about handwritten tickets?
I don't know, they handle their own computer program and audit out there, I know that typically on a certified scale, you operate on a stamped ticket. I mean, we do that buying cattle or anything we do, you run on a stamped ticket versus a handwritten ticket, and I don't know if that's why they quit, or, I don't know if they charged for it for a portion of time, then quit charging, I'm not real sure. I had a couple commissioners asking me throughout the budget meeting what that was generating. Uh, I reached out to them over the past week, and in a roundabout way, said that they hadn't really been collecting it due to printers and issues in the scale house.
But if, but if we're paying Scott County on a non-certified ticket, then why aren't we charging?
I think that would be handwritten, they're weighing.
Are they weighing in at Scott County when they pay, when they haul that trash?
They're, they're supposed to go across theirs, right? Because that's, that's what we pay by.
Well, they'd have, they'd have to be doing one of the other.
It's either, we're allowing on their scales to give us the bill back, or, and we're not doing ours.
Their invoices have the weights on them, what, what we're taking to Scott County, I don't know if that, that is a weight out of here or a weight in.
It would be, I think it would be common sense to weigh out here, and if they weigh in there and they don't match, then we've got a problem between here and there. Because our scales are their scales, one, so it would be beneficial to us that we weigh them out here.
Of course, just redundancy in that, just...
I don't know what we pay Scott, I don't know what we pay the, if we pay it off of our scales, what we're weighing out. Our scales are certified. I did ask them if our scales were not up to date, not certified, if there was an issue. He said our scales are up to date, our scales are certified, it's something in the, the scale house, in the printer.
Why hasn't somebody been notified? That's been eight months. Eight months.
So, so, but we're, we're having to be invoiced from the Scott, uh, Scott side of it? If, if ours is not functioning?
Well, you could be pulling a weight off of ours, but our official stamped weight may be on their end. You'd be checking your accuracy off the scales, I mean, that's it's not just out of the realm of possibility.
But now... It's like the ones that go off when they pull across stamping. A hand, or is it digit?
I've never been in that scale house, I have no idea. There was a truck coming off the scales whenever I went through there and dumped my trash the other day, so, and it was, uh, one of the trucks that's going to MBI. It's one of those trucks, so they were coming off of our scales the other day when I went and dumped my trash, but that's, I really have no clue about their operations, that would be a question for.
We'll take a five-minute recess, we'll be right back. All right, we'll come back into session, I just talked with, uh, Mr. Gasper, the Solid Waste Supervisor, and as far as the big trucks that go in and out, daily trash, or when they haul out. They are weighed, and they log, they keep each truck's weight on a log, and we get to Scott County the way they're also, and then they, Scott County sends them their printout each month, and they reconcile it to see how the loads match up. And that's how, that's how, that's what we pay on. And as far as the construction, uh, waste, he was under the impression that it was a audit finding to write, uh, they had been writing tickets, and he was under the impression that it had gotten to, uh, an audit finding not to, uh, do written tickets like that as such, because there's a possibility of them getting changed. And so, it's a thirty-five hundred dollar to forty-five hundred dollar fixable part chip, did you think, Mickey, maybe a chip or something there? A chip that's in the scales to get it fixed, and he has them scheduled to come, has of July first to come to repair that. And that there's, what information I got from him at that time. Is that pretty much your thinking on that, maybe?
I truly don't know the operations, I mean, as far as what's going on on side at Solid Waste, but...
So that there's, that's where we at, and that brings us back to the agenda of the solid waste. We have a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
You already have a motion.
We already have a motion and second, don't we?
Yeah.
Okay. Question.
Roll call vote, please.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod? Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Julie?
Four.
Nine, four, and one absent.
Nine, four, and one absent. Our third one is Fund one twenty-one, is the American Rescue Plan Fund. Tyler, would you like to explain that just for a second?
This is the, uh, American Rescue Plan that passed this money, actually came in, we had to set it up in a separate bank account, had to be set up in a separate special revenue fund. We actually have a budget amendment going tonight to start that fund for this year, because the money came in over the past month, but this budget will include the money that we have approved the bid for to purchase the medical center, and then, that's simply the only thing in this budget.
So far, what they're telling us, it can be used for, uh, anything to deal with COVID, as far as medicals, and medical situations, I believe, as far as, uh, the, um, medical facility. Anything to upgrade, uh, a medical facility that you have at this time, if we don't have one. And I'm looking to see if it can be used for any type of PPE, uh, equipment. It can be used for, uh, at this time, it can be used for broadband, is the main thing, uh, water and sewage.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Lester Gooding to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Benny Hughes, is there any further discussion?
Can that be used anyway for highway?
No, not at this time, no, it cannot, no, I've called several different people on that, no infrastructure at this time, no. Now, that don't mean it won't change in the next thirty days, that don't mean it won't change, I mean, because it's a day that, it's a, a daily thing, what comes down from the federal people. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod? Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Julie?
Four.
Nine, four, and one absent.
Nine, four, and one absent. One twenty-one passes. Your next one is Fund one twenty-two, that is your drug control.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Mickey McDonald to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kim Davison. Any further discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod? Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Julie?
Four.
Nine, four, and one absent.
Nine, four, and one absent, motion passes, your next one is one twenty-eight, you're seeing your center nutrition. This is basically the same as it was last year, Tyler, pretty much so?
Uh, yeah, they changed a, a few things around as far as the allocation, I mean, we discussed it throughout the budget committee, but, um, the contract, I've, I've still yet to receive a contract for their funds that they'll receive in revenue for next year, so I went off the same contracted amount as last year, we brought in quite a bit over that this year, because they've allocated some extra funds for that, and been feeding some extra people, but I use the same contracted amount that we had last year.
I talked with them at, uh, UCDD and UCHRA, and, uh, Holly assured me that it wouldn't be no less than it was last year, hopefully be more. At this time, we're, like Tyler said a moment ago, we're feeding a lot of people right now. Uh, some of it will stop when we go back to full house because of, uh, that was under the COVID restrictions, but as of July the first, we'll be able to start having congreg- congregant meals back at the center. And speaking of that, July the seventh will be finally a, a major opening there, and they wanted to let all the commissioners know that they were invited, uh, July the seventh, on a Wednesday, at nine o'clock, it starts.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, motion to approve, one twenty-eight, by Commissioner Benny Hughes, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Julie Matthews, any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod? Four. Kim?
Four.
Leslie Ledbetter?
Benny?
Four.
Lester? Has joined.
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Julie?
Four.
Nine, four, and one absent.
Nine, four, and one absent, Fund one twenty-eight passes. The next one is Fund one thirty-one, highway.
Jimmy? It's Leslie, before we go any further, I've been logged off.
Okay.
And I've, I've been on the phone, uh, with, um, CTEST, trying to confirm about a vote from earlier. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry, um, and so I've consulted with CTEST on the vote about the Human Resources Director.
Yes.
Because Robert Cooper is only absent, he did not abstain from voting or take himself out of the quorum. He is, it technically still requires a six out of ten vote. Or a six out of nine vote, as it would be here.
Okay.
So that vote actually failed because it was a five, four vote.
Okay.
I just want to be sure that we're legal.
Well, we'll back up and change that, then. No, it just failed.
Amendment to the budget, though.
There's amendment to it also, that one passed.
But if it can't pass, the one previous has failed.
Yes, it can. Why could it not, why could you not put the budget in there? What about the second, what about the B part to that, Leslie?
Well, that's just it, if your budget is based on that, you'll have to go back and, and revisit that budget, it's taken me a little while to get this information, and we've all been logging in and out, I, I can't get good service. I apologize.
So what you're saying, when it comes to budget, you have ten court members, they all have to...
Well, we're not talk, I, I'm talking about the vote for moving the Human Resources Director into the finance department.
The resolution, yes, ma'am.
So if that fails, then the budget that moves it over into that also fails, or has to be revisited.
So would, so would you like to, one more time, you're law clear more than you were a good while ago. The purpose of this, we have a ten-member board, and it has to be, uh, sixty percent of it, of a ten member, even if you're not here, if you're not present.
Yes, it has to be a majority vote of six, it would be six members of the ten.
Because it's a resolution?
Even though one member is, even if one member is absent, that doesn't count against, so to speak.
It doesn't what?
It doesn't count as a vote against. So you have to have a six for a majority.
Because it's a resolution, correct?
It's one of the types of votes that require that, but six would, you, you would have, require six if there were ten people there anyway, right? A five, five vote would require a tiebreaker.
Yes.
So you're gonna have to have six votes, no matter what, to pass that.
So we need to take a step back, then, to the budget.
And I apologize. I'm trying to get back on the phone with CTEST in the meantime, when y'all took a break, but it just didn't connect.
So we need to back up and restructure the... On highway. We've not got anything yet on it. No, we're not, we're not getting nothing on the highway.
Mickey made the motion.
You didn't make the motion? I didn't know it.
I heard her make the motion.
Okay.
It, it doesn't matter. So, let me throw another kink in there that CTEST has brought to my attention just now. If you all intend on revoting that motion under new business at the end of the meeting, you can do that. you can do that, but then you'll have to go back and revote that budget again. But you'd have to do it under new business at the end of the meeting.
I guess that's when we'll do it. So we got to... So the motion to put her, to put her under finance failed, correct?
Correct.
That is correct. According to CTEST advisement and Robert's Rules of Order.
Okay.
But do we need to go back and adjust the budget now to reflect that?
We'll have to under new business.
Okay.
101.
That, that is correct.
Thank you, Leslie.
And if you all wish to revoke that motion, I've had a question, could you revoke the entire motion? Only if you take it up as new business at the end.
On the budget, on the budget part?
No, sir, on the Human Resources Finance Department vote.
Okay. If we, if we wait to do the 101 under new business, then we can't pass 13. Because if we've not fixed them all right before we do the appropriations on line 13, then that doesn't work.
Correct.
I think you're correct.
So if we're going to do 101, it needs to be done now. And then we can, if anybody wants to bring anything up under new business to revote on it, then we can do that.
I think Mr. Cooper is absolutely correct.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
Since I made the motion to amend the 101 budget, I'll make the motion that we rescind that. The motion has been to rescind the budget amendment.
And I'll second that.
To 101 by Commissioner Larry Cooper. Second by Commissioner Justin Miller. Roll call vote.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Julie.
Four.
941 absent.
941 absent.
I make a motion to approve Fund 101 as originally presented.
Motion has been made to approve 101 as originally presented.
Second.
By Ms. Kim Davidson. Do we hear a second? Lester Gooding? Commissioner Lester Gooding, second the motion. Any more discussion? Roll call vote.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Against.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Julie.
Four.
Eight four one against and one absent.
Eight four one against and one absent. So Leslie, you still there?
I am.
Okay. So item number 10, which was the classifying the Human Resource Office within the budget and Office of Fentress County Finance, that there is a no vote. That there is, failed, correct?
That failed.
For the reason that it had to be a majority because it was a resolution.
It had to be a six, yes, you would have to have six votes to make it a majority of the commission. Because it doesn't matter that Robert is only absent.
Hello?
Are you there?
Yes.
It doesn't matter that Robert's only absent, you still had to have six out of ten to pass. Even if there was one absent, six out of nine.
Simple majority doesn't work.
Correct.
Simple majority doesn't work, so it had to be, okay.
Not in this type of vote.
All right, Leslie, thank you.
Sorry.
That's all right, it's no problem.
We're just trying to get it right.
We have, we have had a motion by Commissioner Mickey McDonald. Do we have a second? Who seconded that motion? For the highway, who seconded it? Ms. Kim Davidson seconded that motion. Any more discussion on anything we went over so far, I guess? Roll call, please.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Julie.
Four.
941 absent.
941 absent. Motion passes. Fund 141, general purpose school.
Motion to approve as presented.
Motion to approve as presented. Do I hear a second? That was by Commissioner Kim Davidson. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lester Gooding. Any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Julie.
Four.
941 absent.
Motion passes. Nine, four, and one absent. Fund 143, Central Cafeteria.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Benny Hughes to approve. Do we hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mickey McDonald. Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Julie.
Four.
941 absent.
Motion passes. Nine, four, and one absent. General Debt Service.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Kim Davidson to approve. Second by Commissioner Mickey McDonald. Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Julie.
Four.
941 absent.
941 absent. Motion passes. Tyler's out there covering off the budget that you know of.
Yeah, that's got all the budget.
Ready to move on. Item number 13. Consideration of Approval of Resolution 2021-23. Making Appropriations for the Various Funds, Departments, Institutions, Offices, and Agencies in Fentress County for the Year Beginning July 1, 2021 and Ending June 30,
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Kim Davidson to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Benny Hughes. Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Julie.
Four.
941 absent.
941 absent. Motion passes. Item number 14. Consideration of Approval of Bid Proposals for the Act for Vigilance. This is, we've been several places on this one, looking for land and such. We have it, we've acquired it, you've all voted to purchase it. Majority of the commission did. We have two things in Fentress County mostly, it's tourism and agriculture. And I was given this here to read. We have $37 million of market products that are sold in agriculture per year. Total farm production expenses is $34 million. We're the number three or four in background in cattle and agriculture in the state of So you have the bids there in front of you. You know what the low bid was? With, if the low bid comes in, he will be getting in touch with his supplier, the steel building, to make sure that there is still good. Then you have two more there on the agenda also that is somewhat higher in value and cost. So...
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the low bid, provided that they guarantee us their bid.
I second that.
Motion's being made to accept the low bid if they will guarantee their bid. Motion was made by Commissioner Lester Gooding and seconded by Commissioner Mickey McDonald. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, could we have Tyler speak to financing and someone on this project?
You sure may.
This would be something that would have to be financed through a debt issuance. When you're looking at land acquisition, then the cost of this project, your architectural fees, you're looking at, you're getting close to $2 million. Granted, John has a grant to pay for a portion of this, but it's $150,000, so you're looking at a debt issuance to pay for this. What that debt issuance looks like, I'm not sure. I've been talking with Cumberland Securities. I don't know if we would be better off for like a bond issuance or a capital outlay note, but along those lines. I mean, that, that's going to turn around and have to come back to you all as well for a debt issuance.
So we have, and our, our debt fund is, how, how healthy is it?
Probably roughly around two and a half million dollars.
So this would be around a two million project. We got roughly 2.5 of our debt service fund.
After this year, it'll probably be around 2.8, 2.9 million in debt service. That's a conservative estimate.
Yeah. The payments that come out of that debt service, too. Then our acquisition of the freestanding ER will be coming from a grant?
From the American Rescue Plan. What we're working on.
Um, the cost of lumber is tripled.
It has since we started this. You're inside this building, of course, will be more of the wood.
Right.
And, but you're outside, of course, you're renting, and that type will be steel.
Right.
And since the COVID, is it going to go up anymore? Is it going to come down? Who knows? I don't know. You know, we can't see the future.
Is there, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to...
No, go ahead.
Um, I mean, is there a rush on getting this built?
Well, inflation, you know, you don't...
That grant has a little bit of a limit.
Well, the grant, the grant, $150,000 you're going to use, that there's going to, that is going to be expiring, I think in May of '22, am I correct? '23? Amanda, is it, the grant on this right here from the Ag Department, Tennessee Department of Ag, does that expire in '22 or '23? It expires in, I think, May of '22, that portion there does. And then, y'all have already agreed to purchase the land, so, but...
But now we have promised a lot of other donations, correct?
According to Mr. John Gunner. I don't know where they're at or where they're coming from.
According to John, of course, when you're talking about a project of this caliber, I think that you have to look at the potential cost of the whole thing in hopes that maybe we do get some donations to help pay for it. We don't end up having to finance the entire project or, you know, or we're not out those funds. So that is one thing that I'll talk to Cumberland Securities about is if we decide to do this, what's the best steps to take? Because if we receive, let's say we receive half a million dollars in donations, I don't know if that's realistic. I don't know who he's talked to or what he's got working. He's not given us a number or names for that matter. Nobody's wrote a check or given any money, but...
Maybe we need to talk to him and kind of pin him down on that.
He's, we've, we've discussed it.
Have we discussed it?
Yeah, I mean, it's, his words are, is nobody's going to write a check until they see something moving and something happening. That's what he's, that's what he's told us time and time again.
What's the fee on issuing that? What's it going to cost on issuing it?
Depends on which way we go with it, what's best. I know at one point in time, of course, at one point in time when we talked about this, this was half this price. And that's pretty much due to the increased cost of construction and construction materials. But at one point in time, we were better off for sure to go with a capital outlay note because of cost of issuance. But now we're getting to the point on the amount of debt that we could maybe sell a bond to pay for this and offset the cost of issuance with a lower rate of interest. So that's something those guys are professionals on and, you know, I rely on John Warner with Cumberland Securities and we work close together.
Without knowing the fee, I mean, we're right now, before we even do a fee, it's 1.928 million. I mean, I mean, we, we look at 1.607, but you've got to add $225,000 to the land on that. $77,000 is what we're going to move tonight on the engineering fee, plus we still owe the $19,000 on that. So we're at 1.928 million right now before we even do an issue.
Yeah, I think if you're looking at this project, you might as well just look at, this is a $2 million project. At this point, where this is standing, this is a $2 million project.
And we wouldn't save $7,000 earlier and we want to spend $2 million?
Do I, do I think that that's going to get cheaper in a year? I, I don't, I don't think so. Some, some people would maybe disagree, but if you're, it's, it's economics. If I'm, if I'm a contractor and I've got work scheduled a year out and I'm having problems getting materials now, that's not going to change. You go back here to Potter's, if he's selling out of two-by-fours every day, he's not going to lower the price on them. I mean, it's just basic economics. And do I think in a year we're going to get, get this done any cheaper? No, it's potentially going to cost more. I mean, lumber's still on the rise, materials are still on the rise, labor's on the rise. Everybody's seen that. So I don't think it'll get done cheaper, but this project is double what we originally started at. And, and that, I do think that it's truly doubled in cost due to the fact of increased price of materials. And that's why this guy's hesitant on his bid is the increased cost of his, his metal package for this bill.
But that's what his motion was to, if he'll guarantee that price. If we don't get started now, it's just going to go up.
Maybe, we don't know.
Well, true.
I mean, COVID, probably causes it to fall here, you know? I don't know. I mean, why not...
Any more discussion?
So, I mean, the motion wise, if the lowest bid can hold true to that price, we'll go with him. If not, are we going with the second lowest?
If not, you would, you would make a separate motion to go with the next one.
What, do that in a separate motion?
Mm-hmm.
Can you amend it to say that one? I mean, that, would that be your wish?
That's going to put you at what?
That's going to put you at what? That's going to put you at one point eight.
Be simple or just do a second motion?
Yep.
Yeah, if you, I mean, if you were to try to hold off and come back to your next meeting, Alan places his bids good for forty-five days. That's what he requests. This gentleman gave us eleven to accept his, and he came back and said he wanted to change it. So that's why, just so everybody knows, that's why we're on the contingency that they'll hold their bid. We want to take the low bid. If not, the next guy, well, if you try to wait till the next commission meeting, you're past your forty-five days out of where we bid this project. So then you're back to potentially rebid the project.
What Tyler said, the gentleman on the low bid, they gave him to the, he would hold his bid to the fifteenth. This is what the Steel Frame people said, we'll just hold this bid until the fifteenth of June, which is already passed. So, uh, you really don't, really don't know. If this gentleman got the bid, he would call and say, are you going to hold true to what you let me bid or not? Where it boils down to, basically. Chairman, I have a question. Question being called for by Commissioner Larry Cooper. Roll call vote.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Against.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Against.
Julie?
Against.
Six, four, I see. Six, four, three against and one absent.
That, Commissioner Gooding's motion passed. Six, four, three against and one absent. Now, if the gentleman, if this gentleman does not, if he cannot get his steel man to agree, do you want to anticipate another motion? Or you just want to wait and see what he says or?
Just have to rebid it.
Then rebid it. If his doesn't hold true, do you want to rebid it in the fall?
You need that in the motion?
We need that in the motion, yes. Rebid it in the fall if the low bidder, if his steel manufacturer with the, with the package that he's put together does not hold strong as of now.
Are you, are you going to rebid on the hopes of a lower price in six months? Means that would?
Whatever, you know? We were told today if it was to be rebid, to wait until November, December, because people might be caught up in work and want something for the spring. I don't know. They'll be up to the commission to do what they want to do. Or we can touch base with this guy in the next few days and see what his does. And if he doesn't, we can rebid it or whatever. But if the land is there, you know, that's got, y'all already voted to pay for that. Any more discussion, if anybody? Anybody on the left, anybody on the right, anything to say? Now's the time to speak up.
Well, I think we ought to go with the next highest bidder, because I don't anticipate prices coming down.
Well, we can bring, if we find out from this gentleman here, we can go with, uh, we can go with the next one.
Let's deal with him first. Deal with him first.
Does anybody think we should just wait and rebid it and all of this first guy don't? I mean, because, you know, you hear all the time that there's some projections showing that some of the prices may come down, you know, on a lot of your materials. I mean, you never know. Be up to y'all. If you want another motion, if you want that to be a motion, we'll make it.
I just want to say that when this project and I was, I've all for this on the front end. It started off because John had brought us, we were going to get a hundred fifty thousand dollar grant. We were going to donate some property. And then the property wouldn't perk, so then we ended up spending two hundred and twenty-five thousand for this hundred fifty. Now we're up to two million. I don't, guys, I don't see our thinking here. I, it's just.
Well, we can, we can, uh, we can stay where we're at or we can try to move forward, you know? That's where we're at. We can, it's up to y'all. It's up to y'all. We can stay, we can stay where we're at. People says, a lot of people says, well, I wish we had what this county had or wish we had what that county had. Well, I will speak to, what, a lot of the constituents have been approaching me about, about this. Some have not liked the idea, but there's been a lot that's in the agriculture and the cattle business that deal with livestock a lot that say, hey, we need something that's a little bit more accessible. We need something that's a little bigger, uh, something that we can come to. And, you know, there's a lot of people from around the world, around the United States that would come here. So you're looking at, you're not just looking at them coming here and showing their cattle or whatever. You're also looking at tax revenue that's probably going to be brought in from these people that's coming to our county to spend money. So, you know, you got, there's a lot more than just the that to look at as well in this.
And I agree. Like you said, what we have to look at what we have. We have to embrace what Fentress County has to offer. And it's tourism and agriculture, that's a big part of it. And, you know, yes, we would love industry. That would be ideal if we could get that. But y'all, we have fought and we have tried. So sometimes you have to step back and let's reevaluate. And so, yes, it is, you know, it's a lot of money, it's a lot to spend. But I think we have to tell people in Fentress County, we want to invest in the future. We want to invest in your youth. We want to support what Fentress County's always been, been about agriculture. We're seeing people move here from lots of different states. They're realizing they can come here, they can work from home, they can live in Fentress County. So hopefully they're going to bring their kids here and they're going to embrace what a lot of what Fentress County is, agriculture and things like that. So that's my thinking. I like promoting that, I like embracing that, and I like telling people in this county, we believe in you, we believe in what you've always stood for, and let's, let's go forward. Let's, let's see what we can do.
You want to take this one out here and I'll make the call tomorrow and see what we can find out?
Let's go with it.
On this, on this right here, and then if they don't, come back next month. Something other plan or something other else or forget about it or whatever. That where we're at?
Yep. Next item.
Item number fifteen, consideration of approval of bid proposals for the solid waste Clark Range convenience site. This is the site we have it there. We had one bid turned in. With that being said, uh, this is the, with the solid waste, the balance will be, of course, like Tyler and Mickey Mose and everyone has said, you know, this stuff has, since it's started to come up, it has doubled in prices. So that's kind of where we're at, but it will come out of the solid waste budget. And that there's something that more or less has to be done because they're surveying. I got a call this week about when we're going to be started, when we're going to be, hopefully have it finished. So that there's where we're at on that one. That is the convenience site at Clark Range. That one twenty-seven we'll be removing. Do we have a motion to effect of this?
So move.
Said we only have one bid turned in, we had three bids on that.
We did have three bids?
Yeah.
Okay. But that was the lowest bid, was one sixty-one?
One sixty-seven, one oh five.
And that?
That's the architect's recommendation.
Who is being held responsible?
Philip Porsh.
I'll second his.
We made the motion. Motion by Commissioner Lester Gooding. Do I hear a second? Have you heard a second? Mr. Benny Hughes. Any more discussion?
Could you give us, uh, what we got out of the old convenience site when the state acquired that for the new road compared to what we're having this one?
Was that ninety?
Approximately eighty thousand dollars.
Eighty thousand, we bought the land out of it.
And then we'll get some movement expense as well. I think they allot some movement expense from the state when we turn that in as well. They did on the fire hall.
So we'll end up losing sixty-some thousand dollars for the move, for the change?
That will come out of the solid waste.
That'll come out of the solid waste budget.
Is that correct, Donald?
Okay.
Yes.
Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Julie?
Four.
Nine, four, one absent.
Nine, four, one absent. The next one is consideration of the tourism enhancement grant project for the boat paddle storage building for the park at Alvin C. York down there. This year, Ms. Amanda's still here, and so she's going to speak to that right there, what she has on her mind, what we might need to do.
If you remember last summer, we were funded for this grant. It's a tourism enhancement grant. The grant amount is thirty-five thousand, seven hundred, twenty dollars. At that time, our match was one thousand, eight hundred, eighty dollars, okay? And the project that we proposed was the boathouse for storage for kayaks and tidal boats and things like that. A parking area, signage, and walking path that would lead, you know, connect our boathouse to the sidewalk there in the park, which would lead to the water, okay? As we were just discussing earlier, um, construction has, um, went up and our bid alone for the boathouse tripled in cost. If you will say there, the bid came in at thirty-eight thousand, four hundred, twenty dollars. So if we choose to go forward with this project, you know, we would have some additional match that the county would have to take on. I have spoke with, um, the tourism enhancement folks at ECD, and they surprisingly have said that they are fine just doing the boathouse. You know, most of the time there's a lot of, of, you know, negative feedback whenever you're just singling out, you know, just going to do one part of a project. But they actually, they said, you know, they would like for us to go forth with that part of the project because that part has the most economical impact on the community. If we did that, our match, it would go from the one thousand, eight hundred, eighty to two thousand, seven hundred dollars. We don't know what construction's going to be like in six months or a year. Our contract is good through April, twenty twenty-two, so we've got some time. Totally up to you all. I would, um, totally up to y'all. But I would almost recommend us rejecting this bid and waiting some time. Nope. I'm good with whatever y'all want to do. Really, I am. Okay. Um, whatever y'all want to do. We can reject it, put it out for bid again in, you know, October, November. I feel like, I mean, it's not a big project. I mean, they would have time to complete it by April. But if y'all want to go forward with it, we can totally do that. I'm good, whatever.
So you, so we have until April next year?
Yes, to complete the project. And they said, I mean, whatever we do, as long as the boathouse is done, they're happy. I mean, it's not, it's, um, ten by, it's, I think that, I think it's in your specs, ten by thirty-six. Ten by twenty-six. I knew, I knew.
A month, a month maybe.
What, if we done the thirty-eight, four twenty, what would the county's total price cost be?
Two thousand, seven hundred dollars.
That's not no parking lot or anything?
Yeah, that's no parking lot.
This thirty-eight thousand is just the building.
Yes, that's right. Nothing else. No signage, no parking area, no walkway. Oh, everything, yeah, yeah. This time last year is when we submitted this, so.
So is this, is this a wooden structure? What is this?
Yeah.
It's all wood? With a metal, a metal?
So you would actually pursue rebid it?
I mean, I don't know what the cost, no promises on the cost, but, I mean.
Did you get any no bids back or just only one person bid?
Pretty much, yes, yes. And I feel, I mean, you know as well as I do, I feel like anyone who's wanting to work, I mean, this is a very small project, so with bigger projects out there, you know, it is going to be hard to get people to bid on it.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we reject the bid. Motion's been made by Commissioner Lester Gooding to reject it at this time. Do you want to come back and rebid it later?
Yes.
And to come back and rebid it later.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Benny Hughes. Any more discussion? Roll call vote.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Julie? Four.
Nine, four, one absent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Amanda. Number eighteen. No, I'm sorry. Number seventeen, bid proposal for the sheriff's video server.
This is the video server for the body cams that they purchased. This video server was separate of those cameras and was not included in the original bid for the server to back up their data, to back up the video footage. Fast Assist is our IT company that we currently use countywide. And Custom Signals is the, that is who purchased, we purchased the cameras from.
Fast Assist, we've got two different bids here. What's?
I think size of storage.
How can they submit two bids to the same project? Did we, did we request something that wasn't?
I think what they're submitting is a basic server and then a server with larger storage on it.
Thirteen hundred dollars.
I think the basic storage will get you by, the basic server will get you by, the larger storage is going to do you longer, take care of you longer.
What did this one bid on? Did he bid on the more service, more storage? Or does he have actually more storage than the thirteen thousand? If that's the case, then we're.
Right.
The Fast Assist looks like they have fifty-four TB of storage and the one, the custom, has fifty TB of storage, which I have no clue what that.
That's terabytes.
Terabytes, okay. And then, um, the Fast Assist has RAID five configuration and the other one has RAID six. So looks like that thirteen, six, sixty-four bid from Fast Assist is pretty compatible with the same amount of storage, if not a little more than the other one.
Well, I'm trying to find out what on the Fast Assist is twelve, three, forty-seven. What's the?
Look at the bottom. It's with fifty-four TB and then RAD dash zero configuration. That's the, the sentence at the bottom. That's the only difference.
With Custom Signals, it's got back office training in there with them being the vendor for the cameras. They're going to train you on the software they're putting on for the cameras. I'm not a hundred percent sure if that comes with the cameras. If that's part of just the, it doesn't have a price listed out from it here, but that's, that's just a difference that I noticed when I was looking through it was the training, which Fast Assist, we use on a daily basis here. So they're a company we're familiar with, and we know the people as well, so. The sheriff's gone, I don't know if he has a preference.
Tyler, does that low, does that low bid, does that meet their requirements?
Yeah, I believe it, it meets the minimum spec requirement for hardware. So when you're specking computers and technology, you typically have a minimum requirement, you know? If you're looking at anything, on a, to do with a computer, you have a minimum requirement. And I think that that meets your minimum requirement for it.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we take the bid for thirteen thousand, six, sixty-four.
I second that.
Motion's been made by Larry Cooper to accept the bid, Fast Assist for thirteen thousand, six, sixty-four, seconded by Commissioner Tim Davison. Seconded by Commissioner Kim Davison. Is there any more discussion? Anything you need to ask the sheriff about?
Yeah, is that, what was your preference on this? Do you have one?
Body cam.
No, that's the fifteen thousand.
Now, this is the fourteen-nine.
There's not one here for fourteen-nine.
The what?
We don't have one. The server on that one, the server on that one's fourteen-nine and then shipping it, they're adding in a hundred and fifty dollars for shipping it. Fifteen thousand, fifty dollars is the total of that.
We've got, not rather, if the ones that were gonna buy the cameras, if whoever got the cameras, would, would we not want them to come and set it up and train us? Or would we wanna go with the cheaper one? I mean, as soon as it's called, we'd do whatever.
The other one had the better specs, didn't it, Tyler? The Fast Assist, you have four terabytes more storage.
Who do you currently use right now, Sheriff?
The sheriffs from, uh, Custom Signals.
Well, we need to get by as cheap as we can, but we'd also need to buy what, uh, what'll get the job done too. The lowest price may not be the cheapest. Your, uh. But I mean, you know, if he.
Yeah, those are the ones.
We take it the middle of the road.
Yeah, it was, um.
When you're bidding, the one you're bidding on has.
Yeah, the thirteen something, Fast Assist.
So the thirteen-six-sixty-four has the more storage and has the more, and they come in and show you how to set it up or whatever and do you set it up for you. Is that correct, Tyler? What it says?
On the Custom Signals, shows that it's got back office training for system administrator and end user training.
So Fast Assist don't offer the training?
Been there here, they're on site, but as far as handling whatever software is going on for the server, I'm not sure.
So if you get the cheaper one, you're taking the chance on nobody showing you how to use it, right? I guess.
Do what now?
If you take the cheaper bid, you're more likely to take the chance on nobody showing you how to use it? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, I think we'd need to be trained on it, wouldn't we?
Well, this and here, the Custom Signals, they, uh, include training on it.
It includes all setup and instruction of use and we'll train.
My question is, did we, did we bid apples to apples then?
Yes, we have one spec sheet that has minimum requirements. So when you bid technology, you have minimum requirements. We bid one spec sheet with a minimum requirements. That spec sheet is based upon the cameras that we're using, because we just purchased those new cameras, new body cams. So the company, Custom Signals, they have a server. Technically, probably we could have done sole source, it's their cameras, we wouldn't have had to bid it, but the situation we've been in, just, just to make sure everything's clear enough for audit, we went ahead and we bid this. Because a computer server is a computer server. You can get options out there. I mean, it's a computer, but yes, you're apples to apples as far as the server, the physical server goes. That's what we're bidding. That's what our bid was for, the physical server to set on site. Now, Custom Signals gonna have to come put their software on it regardless, because it's, it's their cameras that they're running. They're gonna have to communicate with their video server.
Do they need to be compatible with what we're already using here now?
Mr. Chairman, I move that I'm in my original motion to take Custom Signals. We're gonna be here all night.
Yeah.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Larry Cooper to amend his motion.
Jim, second.
To go with Custom Signals. That motion, amendment motion was seconded by Commissioner Lester Gooding. Roll call vote on the amendment.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Julie?
Four.
Nine-four-one-absent.
Motion passes nine-four-one-absent. Now vote on the motion as amended. I hear a motion as amended.
So move.
Motion made by Commissioner Benny Hughes, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Leon Step. Roll call vote, please.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Julie?
Four.
Nine-four-one-absent.
Motion passes one-four, or nine-four-one against. Consideration of number eighteen, approval of bid proposal for the senior center food items for the nutrition program. Chairman, I move that we approve the bids. Motion made by Commissioner Larry Cooper to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Benny Hughes. Any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Julie?
Four.
Nine-four-one-absent.
Nine-four-one-absent, motion passes. Item number nineteen, consideration of approval of request from Fickers County Highway Department to issue debt in the amount of one point five million dollars to upgrade the road specified on the request. Have you all looked over this?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we table this request until next month. We could, um, get a meeting with finance committee and highway department to discuss this.
Finance or budget?
Yeah, be budget, yeah.
This will be highway department debt, correct?
Yes, it will. It's none of your just grant money, no general fund. We'll pay it back ourselves. What, five, six years?
Well, that's one thing we were discussing was term.
Yeah.
We never really got back together on it.
Okay.
Uh, my concern would be cash flow for that payment depending upon that term. So, I mean, the shorter term, the higher the payment, obviously, but my concern would be if we try to cut that too short, you're looking at a very significant payment that could potentially run into cash flow issues.
Mm-hmm.
Six years ties it up in two elections, two, two different road supervisors. I mean, Joey is road supervisor now. Election is next year. It goes through that term and then it goes into two years into the next term of whoever's road supervisor.
Correct? Hasn't that been number four?
Yep, it has.
Well, it was an undue burden upon the, the newly, uh, incoming road supervisor also.
Yeah, but we paid it off and took care of it.
Motion on the floor to take this to, before the budget committee. I've had a motion made. Do you wanna remove your motion?
Go for it.
Uh, remove my motion. Rescind my motion.
He's rescinding, eh? The mo- motion by Commissioner Benny Hughes has been rescinded.
But would it not be prudent to know what term is that we're voting on? If it's gonna be four years, five years, or six years, other than just, hey, I wanna borrow one point five million dollars? I mean, I, I don't have no doubt that they can pay it back, probably, but all we're being asked tonight is to borrow one point five million dollars. We don't have no structure of the loan.
Uh. No, I'm, I didn't start shopping rates, I didn't start chasing this until you guys said, go for it, because I mean, that's a process. And dependent on those terms depends on what type of loan we're gonna chase, I mean.
Would it not be best?
You're gonna have to pass a resolution to issue that debt anyways.
Would it not be best to say that we'll give you permission to get all the information? And then, and, and Joey may not be aware of exactly what the total payment might be. And it may have to be changed the length of years or the way we borrow it. So if we just, all we need to do tonight, I think, is give permission that, hey, we're willing to let you borrow this, but we need to see the terms of the loan. I mean, we can't just.
Yeah, you got to, you have to pass a, a resolution for debt issuance of any sort.
I, I think the permission should be to allow him to proceed, to get the information to bring back. Because if you just, if you vote tonight to say, yeah, you can borrow one point five million dollars, then you know, we need to see how it's gonna be structured, I think. Even though it's their money and they're paying it back, you know, the only reason he's here too is, another reason he's here is because it's gonna go from past his term of office and in order to do that, the commission has to approve it.
Commission's gotta approve it anyways, that issue.
So I, I think tonight would be the permission to allow him to proceed. And I'll make that motion to allow Joey and the finance director to proceed in issuing one point five million dollars debt for the highway department.
Approval is the first step.
Right, not saying that, um, I think we should borrow the one point five million dollars, but I, I think that we should allow the process to go to see what it's gonna be.
What's your motion?
To allow him, allow these two to fa- uh, go through with the process of borrowing one point five million dollars.
I'll second that.
So the motion has been made to allow the highway department to work with the finance department to get the figures together of the borrowing of one point five million dollars to see what figures we can come up with.
Uh, when we return back, I'll come back with the resolution for debt.
I mean, you need to bring it all, all the proper.
You'll either approve the resolution to borrow the money at that point, or?
We don't.
Or you don't. So whenever I come, that's what I'm saying. The next step is to bring a resolution to debt issuance back.
Yeah.
Whether that be in the form of a capital outlay note, whether it be in the form of a bond, whatever the best issue is for that, then we will bring back a resolution.
And, and at that time, I would like to recommend that you at least come back with some type of cash flow to make sure that this does look, you know, that, I, do we don't wanna put a burden on him?
The, the problem with cash flow is not necessarily end of the month cash flow.
Right.
It's, it's throughout the month.
Right.
What we see, um, and typically, they run, they run pretty well most of the time. There's always time where they start getting tight. And honestly, if you talk to our auditors, because I, I've worked with auditors on this, because road improvements and a capital outlay note, you have to be careful because there's a fine line of maintenance versus upgrade, okay? So that's one thing that we have to watch as well, and I've spoke with Joey about all this, so that's, I mean, spoke with Barb, Joey, but the problem is, is cash flow doesn't matter from a standpoint of throughout the month in separate offices. So what Barb's total ma- says, what the trustee's total says, and what mine says. According to the auditors, there can be a finding issued if there's a cash flow issue in the finance office or the official bookkeepers. But we don't receive money throughout the month. So what I'm looking at says we're in the red. We don't have money to pay the bills. Uh, according to the auditor, that is the issue. There has been findings issued to other counties, other highway departments based upon that. So that's what I wanna make everybody aware of. If I pull you end of the month cash flow and all receipts are accounted for, it's gonna look fine. Does that make sense?
A lot of their money comes in quarterly anyway, correct?
Monthly.
But I mean, you get a big chunk quarterly, don't you? Does the gas tax come in quarterly or monthly?
Monthly.
Monthly?
Yeah. Uh, the mineral severance comes in quarterly.
So the motion on the floor is to allow the highway department superintendent and Tyler to sit down, put the figures together, find out how it comes, it comes back next month with a resolution to either allow it or to not allow it.
Correct.
Am I correct in saying that?
Sounds good to me.
We had the motion, we had a second. Any more discussion? Roll call vote.
Mickey? Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Julie?
Four.
Nine-four-one-absent.
Nine-four-one-absent, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, item's numbered, starting with number twenty. School board budget set up for fun one forty-one summer camps. And you see the amounts there. One is for a hundred and forty-seven thousand, five fifty-four, sixty-seven, sixty-five thousand, seven oh five, eighty-eight, and fifty-three thousand, five eighty-seven, oh five. This is for summer camps.
Chair, I move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Larry Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Kim Davison. Any more discussion? Roll call vote.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Julie?
Four.
Nine-four-one-absent.
Nine-four-one-absent. Item number two, health department for health department remodel funded by the state in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-three.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Lester Gooding, seconded by.
I second.
Commissioner Leon Step with a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Julie?
Four.
Nine-four-one-absent.
Highway department for various funds in the amount of thirteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Mickey McDonald, seconded by.
Second.
Commissioner Rod Williams. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Julie?
Four.
Nine-four-one-absent.
Nine-four-one-absent, motion passes. American Rescue Plan one twenty-one to receive federal ARP funds in the amount of one million, seven hundred, ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Benny Cook, Benny Hughes, I'm sorry.
I second.
Seconded by Commissioner Julie Matthews. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Rob, uh, Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Julie?
Four.
Nine-four-one-absent.
Nine-four-one-absent, motion passes. The next item is debt service to show flow through of money for the issuance of the bond for the justice center in the amount of nine million, two hundred and four dollars, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents.
This is pretty much bookkeeping. Um, the money did not touch us. They went straight to pay off the, the lease payment that we had when we refunded that. This is, um, it's material, so it has to show on the books because we issued the debt and took on a debt.
Chairman, I move with approve. Motion by Commissioner Larry Cooper, do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Rod Williams. Any discussion? Not roll call vote.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Julie?
Four.
Nine-four-one-absent.
Nine-four-one-absent, next item is election commission for grant reimbursement for COVID-related purchases in the amount of twenty-three thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars and twelve cents.
For the most part, this is covering expenses that he had. A lot of that was related to COVID, stuff that he was told to do through. For the most part, this is covering expenses that he had. A lot of that was related to COVID, stuff that he was told to do through, through the state, such as the hazard pay for election workers and things like that. Uh, there is a portion of this that's going into voting machines. That it's for poll pads. He may explain to you more of what a poll pad is. Joey's here, but now what he's trying to do is get these poll pads in place. They're, I don't know, a thousand dollars a piece or something. And, and he's trying to buy what he can out of this year's budget and get this taken care of with this grant money coming back in. And then as we move forward, he'll try to, and we know the same thing last year. Uh, he saved some last year, purchased some out of last year, and he's already purchased a few out of this year, I think. We paid for some.
Hear a motion?
I make the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Julie Matthews, second.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Justin Miller. Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Julie.
Four.
Nine-four-one absent.
Nine-four-one absent. Next item is Senior Center donations in the amount of three hundred and twenty-three dollars.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Benny Hughes, seconded by.
Second.
Commissioner Julie Matthews. Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Julie.
Four.
Nine-four-one absent.
Nine-four-one absent. Motion passes. Next item is Convenience Center for Funds to Pay for the Park Range Convenience Center Construction in the amount of one hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Is there a motion?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Lester Gooding. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Leon Step. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Julie.
Four.
Nine-four-one absent.
Nine-four-one absent. Motion passes. Next one is the Act of Being for Architect and Engineer Design Fees for the Act of Being Project, seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Mickey McDonald. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Kim Davison. Is there any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Against.
Four.
Uh, Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Against.
Julie, against.
Uh, I think you skipped me.
I'm sorry. Benny.
I'll be four.
Six-four, three against, one absent.
Six-four, three against, one absent. Library for Summer Reading Program is our next item in the amount of three thousand, two hundred dollars. Motion been made by Commissioner Leon Step to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Jul- Julie Matthews. Any more discussion? Roll call vote.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Julie.
Four.
Nine-four-one absent.
Nine-four-one absent. The last item, Library for Acceptance of the Finkley Foundation Don- donation in the amount of twelve thousand, seven hundred ninety-two dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Make a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
I second.
Made by Commissioner Lester Gooding, seconded by Commissioner Julie Matthews. Any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Julie.
Four.
Nine-four-one absent.
Nine-four-one absent. Any other business to come before tonight? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Need to recess?
I make a motion to recess, eh?
Motion to recess. When's the?
When's the budget, I mean?
To the twenty-eighth. That'll be the final to, for the budget, is that correct?